All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just had it, man. Okay. Discuss, item number five, discuss approved, disapproved resolution for grant application to the New Mexico Water Trust Board. And I don't believe we have that resolution.
Table this one?
Yep, we're gonna table this.
We table item five, New Mexico.
And. Here's our next meeting, man.
December tenth.
So that, that. Resolution has to be submitted with the grant application.
I said number fifteen.
Yeah, but we have to get it approved before then.
Okay. There's a question in the second.
You mean you had to schedule a special meeting to confirm this?
No, it's meetings intense, so.
I thought somebody was saying exceeding the time limit.
No, the application is due on the fifteenth, so. So do I have a motion to table this, again, item?
Motion to table item five.
Got a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just had it, man. Okay, just item number six, discuss new. Discuss new information regarding Renee's investigation on internal affairs.
Do you have any new information, Renee?
No, not yet.
Cause I haven't heard back from the sheriff, I'm just wondering if he contacted you?
No, he didn't.
Not today?
No, I'm waiting to hear back from the fed.
For the what?
The federal bureau investigators?
Okay. And you've already sent the demo of the information?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. I will keep you updated on that.
Okay, I would appreciate that, I have two people waiting, I'm gonna keep like two, three, four minutes, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Item number seven, discuss approved, disapproved request from property owner Charlie Kildore requesting permission for easement from TWSD for the purpose of an electrical pole or underground lines across TWSD property at Torrey Pines and London Hot Road.
It's right across the street.
Yeah, is Mr. Kildore here?
No.
Usually whenever. Power companies do easements, it's the power company that requests easement, not the property owner.
Well, from my understanding, he told me that they're requesting a resolution from the board in order to begin the. Whether or not he's gonna get accepted and if so, underground or overhead.
Question. Uh, I see it's statement in reference to what I just heard. This tells me, if you look at the easement map, the location that they wanna do this, there is no easement, right? So the power company cannot do it until they get a re- resolution from the board, authorized.
That, that would be a first, um, meeting.
I, first time, I've never heard of it, dude.
I, I mean, I've, I've done a lot of easements before for power companies and that's not really how they're doing it, usually it's the power company that requests.
Yes, but if there were, if not a, there are no easements already established.
Right.
In a preset format that we have here, they have to request for a new easement in that area. And as far as I know, we don't have any requests from the power company, do we?
No.
Yeah.
Just out of an abundance of caution, cause I don't know the footprint of this proposed easement, but please do not forget that we have the pits there that are being used as slash pits. I would hate to put an easement in there, I'm assuming this is underground, everything else in that area is underground, but we just wanna make sure we don't cause a conflict.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
That's cause they're actually part of the ground.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, usually, you know, usually if the power company wants something done like that, it's the power company that's requesting, so that they know where to. I mean, this is, this is not how it's easement, easements are usually done, it's not the property owner that requests them, it's our. I don't think so. Any other discussion on this item, is there any negative side to this for, for TWSD? Well.
It's vacant property. It's vacant property.
Can I ask a question, too, is it where we've already been, Penny?
No, it's uh, right next to Torrey Pines, is that, you take over, so you're coming from the shaft coming off of Riverside, going up Torrey Pines, and then you take your first left before you hit the ball course, that first house.
Oh, that walk, Kevin, that's.
Yeah, they're looking to.
Yeah, we've already stayed below that house, so I know where you're at.
Okay, do I have a motion to. Probably table this, I guess?
Until we figure out what the right, what follows.
Yeah, because I know when you do an easement, it has to be, you know, it has to be surveyed, whatever the power company, phone company, cable company, anybody like that, they, they, you send out a surveyor, they survey the area. They fill out a, a request, an application, I've never heard of resolution.
I'll make a motion to table this until we figure out what to do.
So do I have a second on the table?
Just a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just had it, man. Okay, moving on to old business. Approved transfer of TWSD emergency account funds and other tax funds to the operating account for payment of outstanding unpaid invoices due to Rody Law Firm and New Gen Strategies. Any discussion from the board on?
Has any payment been made since the last meeting on these past due invoices?
No.
Yeah.
For some special reason?
Cause we don't have the money. Well, I wanna hear what the, these invoices are for.
You're welcome to go and.
Ask Renee, she can provide you the invoices. And if you look at them, uh. Last I saw on those invoices, a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars of it, of Rody's invoices. Every bit of it was worth that they did on behalf of the district in regards to the rate increase. And, and the PRC approving the rate increase. And New Gen's invoices are also for work that the PRC ordered us to do for a cost of service study, which they've already done that, that's been submitted to. The PRC, the PRC's accepted it, and the PRC has given us uh, permanent approval of those rates. So that rate case is, is approved.
I can, I can tell you that we discussed the voting about payment plan and we proposed installments of five thousand dollars, start paying that down, and it's my understanding that they will accept no less than twenty-five thousand. And if we did that, that would pretty much wipe out our general operating fund, and, and we have other bills that just came to light that nobody knew about that were hidden or disfiled, or one of them was for the trash removal, that bill was now twenty-four thousand. Uh, we're, we're trying to pay that down, they're accepting partial payments, but there's a lot of other bills, there's a lot of other water issues that we have to pay for, uh, parts, whatnot, and so to pay Rody and New Gen, or just Rody, twenty-five thousand dollars a shot is gonna wipe us out when we repair the bills. They need to accept a partial payment until we start going up their accounts again and we can pay the loan. How much do we owe New Gen? Do you remember Renee with that invoice said?
Eighty-five thousand.
Eighty-five thousand, okay.
A quarter of a million dollars to get a rate increase.
I think it's more, like, three hundred thousand. Somebody threw that one out.
Somebody doesn't do their math on that.
In reference to the emergency account fund and paying off lawyers for whatever, that is not the intent or the purpose of the emergency fund, it's there for water related certified emergencies. So if you drain that account in a well goes bunkers. We're gonna be in a world of hurt.
Can I just add to that, I was doing some research on that, and USDA account was another one that came up, and it said specifically that that loan from USDA is for water systems improvement. And any, any dipping into that emergency fund we have with that, we'd require USDA approval, which should come in a couple of months, it could come in a couple of years, and the response could be no. So that and the emergency fund that we have, that has about eighty-six thousand in it now, I think are off limits because we're going for water systems, not lawyer bills.
Okay, so do I have a? Oh wait, there's a few more questions.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, so a couple, maybe about four weeks ago, our account for the attorney was, was a hundred thousand, and then two weeks ago, um, they got another invoice of twelve thousand, which made a hundred and twelve, and so we got another invoice for how much?
I don't know.
Who, who knows?
The last invoice I saw from the law firm was a hundred and twenty-four thousand.
Okay, so we, uh, a hundred and twenty-four thousand total then?
Yes.
Okay, and, uh, the other question is. Why we, we owe the attorney because we voted for a rate increase and we needed an attorney for that, is that right or wrong?
Correct, correct.
So would, that does seem very. Um, um, and then my, the last question is, um, four weeks ago, uh, we were told that the attorney had to be paid. The entire balance was, was, which was a hundred thousand dollars by the next day. And then, um, so naturally I assumed it was made, then two weeks ago, when we had our other meeting, meeting, of course, we didn't have the meeting that I asked, did the attorney get paid? No, then it was made where that we don't have the money. As before, it wasn't really said, although I, I, in my head, I was assuming that we didn't have it. But what, what is our out? Because every two weeks, we're getting billed, 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 and I fully realize we need representation for numerous things, but we do not have an out, and just the attorney fees can sink our little community. And it, cause I mean, what you're saying is we don't even have thirty grand in the account to make a twenty-five thousand dollar payment, is that right?
I don't know.
More or less.
Or, more or less, so, so this is a big deal, and we need to, whether we address it the next agenda or have an open floor right now or something, this is a major, major, major issue. And I'm definitely afraid, obviously, of, of not getting represented, because once that gets around, we don't pay, we don't, you know, we're not good. But then also, um, we, we don't have funds for anything, so. What is the, 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 the plan, I guess, plan of action?
Yeah, I have an answer for that. Sure, ready. Quick books is the priority item to get fixed, so that we know how much money we have. And that's the only way that the rest of it is gonna be taken care of.
Okay.
Until, until we get a fix, a handle on quick books with Ed, Mr. Duckett, and the new lady in the office. We're gonna know.
Okay, so Ed, Ed, your resigning your chair, treasure, right? Okay, so it wouldn't be Ed, so the other two people who had it beforehand to kind of keep up with it, so I guess I'm just trying to understand how we don't have any information on quick books, the checks are being written, but we have money, but we don't have money, and, which I'm assuming, I, I really think we don't have any money, especially for that big.
Let me try to answer the question. What I do every day, I go into the, to the bank accounts and I'll see what the balance is on every one of those accounts. I can't, I can't drain those accounts because the checks are outstanding, but I've got a good idea of how much money is in there, and I think that what bills that I can, keep in mind that I have to keep like the balance for, for payroll and things like that.
Yes.
And then, that's how we've been going along, and we haven't, we haven't bounced into check shift, so it's not that we don't know, have any clue how much money is in there, we, we've got an idea how much is there. But we also have bills that come in constantly, and so we're constantly writing checks to pay those bills that, besides a lawyer and New Gen.
So, um, one of the first meetings that I attended, we were, what I call rather paid, Peter to pay Paul, we took money out of FNS fee to make sure that we could meet payroll.
Okay, that was, that was, uh, last payday, uh, and yeah, I did that, I, I transferred money out of FNS because that was the only account that had money in it, and I, and I, that was, that was the thing that had to be done like right now, I couldn't, I didn't have time to take it through the board, so we had to make payroll and we had to pay some of the bills, that's why I did it that way, I'll tell you that we just did another transfer from FNS for about twenty-five, twenty-six thousand dollars, however, that wasn't paid for the garbage disposal and for fuel supplies and paid for the telephone bill, paid, it, it was all strictly for facilities and services. So that money comes out of FNS anyway, so.
Yes. Um, my, so one more thing, and then I'll be quiet, um, my, my concern is. Um, just like in my household, when you take money out of something else to, to meet that one particular goal, when it should be there already, it speaks volumes, and then we have an attorney issue of lack of payment. And then the other, the third thing is our reserves, we don't know exactly what we have, like we said, we have an idea, but even if it's thirty thousand dollars, that's not a very good reserve.
Reserve funds.
And so on, I'm, one second, I'm, so I'm, I really, really would like to see whether it be the board or a committee or, or, or something maybe for next meeting, I, I'm, I'm not too sure, I'm just kinda getting new in this, to see if we can address these major issues, because to me, these things speak volumes and it's a sinking ship.
Okay, the reserve funds haven't been touched, that's what I'm saying, those, those are for water systems only. What?
Sixty-eight thousand, correct?
For what, I can't see.
For Renee, it's an emergency fund.
No, it's eighty-six in the emergency fund. Okay, sorry, Trish?
Um, my question, and this isn't the first time I've asked this question, and I didn't get an answer last time either, um, now that you say the hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars we paid for lawyers currently was all the rate increase, plus the eighty-five thousand we owe New Gen Strategies, how long will it take us to recoup those funds with the rate increase that you did, that we just paid out for that kind of money, how long is it gonna take us to recoup those funds? I asked, I asked this, I asked this weeks and weeks ago, and I was hoping maybe somebody could have an answer right now.
Those, those rate, uh, those fees, uh, the PRC already approved, um, that those fees can be recouped at, during our next rate increase, whenever that is.
So we got our rate increase last this year and la- last year?
No.
Or?
We had an interim rate increase that was granted to us in May of last year, and then this year, the PRC also increased that thirteen percent, so it was a permanent four and three percent over a few years.
Yeah, and, and I, and I understand we don't have that very many people, so we're, we're more per, uh, you know, per square mile, you know, than receiving money, so I understand our bill's gonna be higher, but is it what I'm understanding that you're saying that money recouped for the attorney will get paid back the next increase?
Yes.
And when will that be, next year?
Whenever the district applies.
So are we gonna have to pay another hundred thousand plus dollar lawyer fee to, yeah, rate increase, too?
No, because they, they, the way, uh, New Gen set up our financial plan, uh, they set it up going, moving forward in years forward that they recommend that the district do a two or three percent rate increase every year or every other year to keep up with inflation.
Okay, so it, it should equal out within a year, is what you're telling me?
Yes. Yeah, this, this, the reason this was such a large increase, uh, this time was mainly due to the fact that over the past thirty years, the rates have only gone up, had only gone up sixteen percent, they weren't even coming, they weren't even coming close to keeping up with inflation.
And I do understand that, and I acknowledge that, I just, I would like to know if it was just basically a smart decision for us to spend that kind of money to get a little bit more.
Well, if.
Yeah, we can't pay.
You have a question back there?
I would like to, let me, let me get the chance. Yeah, okay. I just wanna know if the state of Mexico requires us to have an attorney to get a rate increase?
No, no, not if, if it's a small, if it's a small increase, it's, it's a real simple thing, if it's a large increase, you know.
Yeah, why are we spending the money? To me, I know we have to have rate increases because we need to fix things, why can't we just say, sign a paper that says, hey, we, we're not gonna fight this? Go ahead and raise it to this amount. Save us three hundred thousand dollars.
That's, that's not how the PRC.
Well, I ju- I just asked if we need to have an attorney, why can't we send one of the water board to go negotiate?
I always, I did before, I keep chancing on the question.
Yeah, Jim.
Okay, couple of questions, how, when did we start this rate increase?
Uh. February of. Twenty-three?
Okay, so for the last.
January, February twenty-three, we had hearings last year, May of last year.
Okay.
Uh.
So, at that.
And we had an attorney for that, too.
Well, no, I, I'm, what I'm trying to find out is, why the hell wasn't this ever budgeted? Cause you know the attorney's been saying it's gonna cost you between this and this, so there was never a budget item for the attorney thing? I mean. You, they can't give a ballpark, I've worked for attorneys all my life, they tell you, eh, it's gonna be between five hundred and a thousand to represent you on this, or whatever. And there's never been a budget item, we've never put money back to this, cause we knew this bill was coming.
I can answer your question, Jim, one, we did not have a GM, two, we did not have an account clerk in the office, there wasn't anybody capable of doing any of that.
But we decided to spend that money anyway.
We didn't, it's board get.
Well, right, so, so the board decided to spend that money anyway, knowing that this bill was going to come due.
That's right, that's not right there.
What is this quick books thing in that word?
Our, 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 let me, let me get our.
Until we get.
Wait a minute.
Until we get a working budget, this is gonna keep going on and on and on, we need to form a budget committee.
I can meet Thursday.
With the general manager, someone on the board could be there, and people from the community that have done this before, when we ran this thing like it was supposed to be done. You've got to have a budget, if you don't have a budget, it's like pin your tail on a donkey, blindfolded, I mean, you, you've gotta have a budget, you don't have a budget now. You haven't had a budget for a long time, and these, these emergency funds, what you call it, the asset management fund, is supposed to be funded by thirty percent of the money that comes in, or, um, has to stand by, hasn't been funded for about two years. You guys gotta get your stuff together, and we need to have a budget, without a budget, you don't know what you're doing.
Thanks, Andy.
Um, what do we need to do to move very quickly to get a budget committee, uh, formed?
I'd say we do it now, I'd say Jesse Duckett should.
I think that's excellent.
Head up, because he's done budgets, he wanted to get involved last time, so if he's willing, I would say it's going to be even on Jesse Duckett.
That's excellent.
Is that a motion?
Uh, uh, hell, we're.
A motion? I think so.
Me and Trish are good at setting committees.
I'd like to chair that committee.
Thank you.
I just really, this gentleman over here keeps talking about this quick book thing, if it's so important, why do we not look into it or have it? Cause it's all, I always hear at every meeting that I've been to, it's we gotta have this quick books, that's the, the problem.
Quick books is your county or the district.
Okay, so if that's, if, then.
Cause right now, it's a mess, man, and if you want, after the meeting's over, you and I can sit in the corner and I'll try to explain the best that it's in.
Okay, thank you.
However, the general man, uh, the chairman here and the general manager knows what an urgency that is, it has been brought up for months.
That's what I'm saying.
And we haven't been able to get this thing to move on, I understand we have somebody now in the office, so it seems to me like, you know, we're paying attention now, stress is good.
I have a question about New Gen, it's sort of puzzled me, really, uh, we initially contracted them for thirty thousand dollars through a cost analysis, so, you know, how much it costs us to give water? That's right, right, thirty thousand?
Cost of service study, yeah.
Yeah, for thirty thousand, and then the board, uh, I think, uh, agreed or passed to let them do other things with no dollar amount attached to it. It was like an open check, to do other things, I wanted to know what other things New Gen has done for us.
They, they did the cost of service study, and they also did testimony to the PRC in regards to. They, they did the cost of service study, and they also did testimony to the PRC in regards to the same. So, and, and they, and part of that cost of service study was a financial plan.
So, so that cost is fifty thousand dollars?
Jesse, I, I, I don't know what the total invoices are. I mean, I've asked for them, and you and Chuck.
Renee said she just got these.
Right, oh my god. Through the emails, I've searched and searched, there's nothing on New Gen, and then all of a sudden this week, they all start coming in.
Yep.
Can it explain it? I don't know, guys.
Surprise, surprise. Bills just appear.
Any other questions?
I wanna know who the previous secretary was that took care of all the quick books? The treasurer, and was it good when they had it? Or did this just all come to light because Ed took it over and then Ed couldn't do it because it's such a mess? So, who is responsible to tell us what's been happening to all the money?
From what I can determine, the information that I've been able to collect, um, and talking to, uh, Ruby at Granite Mountain, the quick books really got messed up about three months ago.
Oh, three months ago, it just happened?
Oh my god.
Oh wow.
No, 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 no. No, that's an absolute lie.
That is the biggest lie you've ever told.
That, it's an absolute lie, lie.
That is so not true.
That's a lie, totally.
Do you have evidence?
You, yeah.
I talked to Ruby too.
Yep.
I'm, I'm not getting in an argument with you.
Of course not.
Oh, it's an issue. I requested and they denied.
Oh my god.
Okay.
Um, I would like to know why the general manager does not have access to the quick books. That's right, why is she denied access?
I can get it. Ruby, okay, the accounting firm Granite Mountain, Granite Mountain owns the quick books program that we're using. They give us access to that quick books. And they have to put users on there themselves. We call them, they say, like, it's a idea. I said, I need access to quick books, and so she brought it up, I put my username in, my password, and now I'm authorized to get in quick books and, and, and pay bills, uh, and whatever else. But, you know, Granite Mountain actually owns quick books. And when I did that, when I put my name on it, there was a whole list of people on there. Jerry Barzoni was one, Brad Howard was one, there were several other people that I'd never heard of, there was an intern that was working here last summer, he was on there. She said, this is crazy, you need one person on there and no one else. And so we fixed it. But now we need to put on the new administrative assistant, and when we do that, we're taking my name off. I, I told him, I don't wanna be on there. And I know that, uh, general manager wanted to put her name on there, and you found said, not a good idea. She said, less is better, you need to have one person, one person on your own quick book.
I mean, it kinda makes sense for her to have eyes on that because really it falls under the rules. It makes no sense for the general manager that's supposed to oversee everybody to not have eyes on those quick books. There's gotta be a way, even if she can't edit or modify documents within it, that she should at least be able to see it.
That's a possibility. But, quick books, Granite Mountain people have to put her on there, they said they'll do it. They said they don't recommend that, then if, if general manager is adamant about being on there, then they'll, they'll put her on there.
Well, that, why can't, why can't we operate our own quick books? I mean, I, for my business, I can literally access them.
I wouldn't hear that, I don't know.
I'm not looking to other sources.
It, it, it costs pennies on the dollar.
Right.
I, I had quick books myself when I, when I ran a business. That was over twenty years ago, so nothing like it was then. So I'm kinda lost on it.
It's, it's actually very user-friendly, it's very easy to operate.
So my question is, if you're.
Just, just a second. When, when, when did it happen that, uh, we no longer owned our own copy of quick books?
I don't know.
I, I've never used that.
Jessie was that way when I, when I came onto the board.
Well, we had her own copy when, when I left the office. And, and Ruby worked off an accountant's copy that we would, uh, use a Dropbox to send to her.
As far as I know, Jessie, at least two and a half years ago. I mean, it was before me, so.
Jessie, who came in after you?
Uh, Michael, then Spanky, I believe, is that the way it worked?
And how long was Michael in it?
Huh?
How long was Michael in it?
Uh, I, I, uh, marking data, I don't remember, about a year? Over tape, about a year.
So, um, again, if you're resigning and you're the only one who has access to quick books, what are we, and, and, and we don't have a treasurer, we don't have nothing. Who is gonna write out the bills? And or, who, how do we get access to quick books? Especially if we form a committee, you know, what I'm saying, what, what steps do we need to do?
Well, who's gonna pay the bills? I'm still, I'm, I'm still having access to quick books. I can still write checks, I, I can sign checks. Even if you had industry, huh? You resign industry?
Still work, they haven't replaced me, still work.
I'm, I'm helping the new administrative assistant. We're doing the things that administrative assistants do. She, she's learning fast, she's really good. But until, until she takes over, when she does, then she'll be printing out the checks with the general manager, and then, and then whoever, whoever wants to be treasurer. Then, then in the interim, I can still sign the checks as the second signature.
Is there, um, a way that you can give us, uh, or give, give the committee, um, like, um, two months back or whatever that you've done? And so we could at least go from there just, uh, or three months? Because you, they said the, the issues.
You mean like yearly reports and, yes, information?
Um, um, in, income statements?
Oh, sure, sure.
You know, all this stuff, cause we would need this.
Sure.
To, to.
To go forward.
Get a, a history.
Yeah.
On, to go back three months and make sure nothing is left, right, and center, ever, you know what I'm saying?
Just, I just.
So would, would you be able to do that for the committee?
It takes minutes, it just takes minutes.
Well, yeah, it, it, there's a lot of things that just takes minutes, but I wanna get on, I guess on record to saying, yes, I'd be willing to do it. Or, yes, we can go back three months and stuff.
Well, when I was talking to Jessie, he, he told me that, you know, we can do that, but I'll need his help to do it because I.
Sure, 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 but as long as you're willing or, or we are.
But.
Able.
To be clear, I want everybody to understand that Ruby Renee has told me when I first talked to her, when I first became treasurer back in February of, of twenty-four, that the books were horribly screwed up, they were trying to reconcile them. When I talked to her again about a month ago, she said, they are so screwed up that they've just given up. They just said, we're falling further and further behind because they're screwed up. I talked to Dahlia from Geesley Mitchell, she said the same thing, your, your records are, are horrible. That was from last year's audit. So this crap about me doing the last three months is bullshit.
Yeah, how long did you have access to the quick books?
Less than a month.
And. Who had access before that time?
Before then, it was Jerry Barzoni, it was Brad Howard, it was this intern, Michelle or something, I don't know who it is.
And they, how long did they say the books had been messed up?
Again, they said they're just in, in horrible shape, and that was, you know, back in February.
So they can't reconcile them from their side?
Nope.
And they're professionals, so that says a lot.
Yep.
So this housekeeping problem with accounting goes back, way back.
Yes.
Yes.
More than three months.
And just, just wanna be clear, they're trying to lay the blame on me, and I'm not gonna accept the blame for that. Yes, you are.
Yes, you are.
Yeah, whatever. I tell you why also, the, the best way I see moving forward is for you to resign, and, and we, we get this board back in shape.
Yes.
We get a new win.
Yes.
Are we done with?
So, are we done with this agenda?
I think you beat it.
Wait, 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 what are you gonna do about it though? I mean, are you gonna have one, uh, like maybe appoint one board member to contact Roddy? And, uh, maybe try to negotiate, you know, horse trade, uh, payment plan, or?
I understand nobody will talk to Roddy, but, but Mark, they won't talk to anybody else.
They'll talk to him. They won't take anybody else's call.
Well, you also have to figure out where you're gonna get the money from, right? Cause we can't get it from the emergency fund.
But we gotta at least start from somewhere. They, they, they say they want to accept five thousand, but I guarantee you, if that's what we had to give, that's what we had to give.
So Ed and I were in discussion this morning, and we were talking about making payments this morning, so.
Can we appoint somebody else on the board other than Mark to have communication with Ruby?
What about our general manager? He's gonna hand the job, everything.
General manager.
We don't let her talk to the attorney.
I would like to see Mark step down on the voting communication.
Heather, please. Who's?
I agree.
Supposed to be the, according to our bylaws, the liaison with the attorney.
But whenever we ask you, you go, I don't know, you say, I don't. You always throw something to the box.
Generally, three people that have communications. I don't know what the damn bylaws are saying right now, but I know what they said in the past. The general manager, vice chair, and chair were the three people that could openly call the attorney. The general manager, because issues come up, where the general manager needs to talk and get legal advice on stuff. Renee, will Roddy talk to you?
I haven't tried.
Okay. You don't know.
I've tried to, uh, address the.
It's not me trying to do this, it's, I'm just following.
But other than that, I don't either. I haven't seen a reason to.
When is the last time that you talked to the attorney?
Um. Can we recall it?
We? What? We know?
No, it was Renee and I, but Ed was, it was several weeks ago.
Oh, is that the last bill you got from them?
I mean, I don't know about the bills, I don't get the bills.
No, 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 but when, again, if you're gonna call the attorney, you know you're making a bill. What was that conversation like, and why did you call?
It was over a grievance.
And I'm assuming you can't go into the grievance, right?
Nope.
Okay, so. Oh my gosh.
And, and, and it was.
And also, at that time, it was over the grievance, and I, and I also asked her at that time to petition the district court to appoint another board director.
Let's just move on.
It would be simpler if you just resigned, it would save us some money.
Yep.
Let's move on.
Yeah.
So, do I have a motion to table old business item number one?
I'll make that motion.
I have a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eyes happy.
Surprise. The crime has to be different.
Okay. Moving on to old business number two, discuss the options for moving forward with the petition to twelve district court to appoint vacant director of position, uh, TWST board director. With what lawyer?
Okay. Uh, uh, previous meeting, I reported to the board that, that I had contacted an attorney at the Truitt Law Firm, Rob Vidosso, the attorney that I talked to works at Vidosso and Alaborda. They do, and, and employ, uh, legal work, like what we're looking for. Uh, I, I talked to this attorney, I paid for him out of my own pocket, so the, the board's unobligated. And I told him what we were faced with, uh, we, we discussed it. And, and he told me that, that he would take a three thousand dollar retainer, and he would hand our case, six dollars to account. You do have to have an attorney represent you in, in the district court to file the petition. He said, but if it goes quick and easy, I'll refund whatever's left out of that three thousand dollar retainer. Shouldn't be any problem with it. Uh, and some of my concerns about having outside, you know, big city borrowers come into a court like this, sometimes the judges, you know, are, are getting up in arms about that. This guy worked in that court for five years, he knows the judges, he knows the procedure, he knows, you know, the all the ins and outs of it. And I think it would go a lot faster, a lot easier. We have three thousand dollars, we can pay this retainer with it. And I think that we should, oh, and also, I called the court yesterday in that meeting, that phone call that, that I was there, that he, he told the attorney to start on it, uh, several weeks ago, nothing's been filed in District Twelve. We need, we need a fifth member on this board, and we can't wait. They're, they're probably upsetting us because we haven't been paying them. They're not doing anything about it. We need to get this done. So, I make a motion that the board approve three thousand dollars to pay your Truitt offer on your retainer and, and get this moving.
That's actually pretty cheap.
Mm-hmm.
Agreed.
Probably cheaper than that phone call.
Lawyers in the states.
Exactly.
Also, the option that the attorney general is gonna make a totally different decision, so.
Well, right now, we got a motion down the table.
That's not an option. You second, okay. And the attorney general can do whatever they wanna do, and I'm happy to supply the attorney general with all of my documented observations since I took a seat on the board. So I welcome that, but the attorney general is not gonna be the one to file the petition in District Twelve. We need to get on that now. So motion is still out there.
Yes.
She got a question.
The last time that this was brought up, you said that it was a conflict of interest with the attorney, but no, I'm sorry, Spanky.
It is.
That it's a conflict of interest, and as they're already mad at us because we owe them hundreds of thousands of dollars, do we really wanna just not pay and go grab another lawyer? Like, you think they're gonna be all cool and dandy with that?
No, I don't think they will, I would imagine we'll probably get sued over it.
What it sounds like.
How about, how about we drive a retainer with them?
We, we don't have a retainer, we don't pay them a retainer fee.
You said that at the last.
No, I didn't, I said we have a retainer with them.
We don't pay them a monthly retainer fee. Really?
You said we had a contract with them and we don't.
Pardon me?
You said we had a contract with them and we don't.
We have retainer agreements with them.
You just said you didn't have a retainer.
It's retainer agreement that, that they work for us.
So how do we get out of that agreement and then start paying them?
We don't, we don't, we don't have, we don't pay them a monthly retainer.
You said we were under contract to Roddy, and the truth is, we have a, uh, retainer on a per basis item. We don't have a contract. But you told us, you had a contract with Roddy.
And we couldn't use anybody else.
And she did.
Yeah, she did.
She did.
We have a retainer agreement with Roddy, with Samantha Holtz as our general counsel.
No, I'm per basis item, not as general counsel.
We're item retainer, that's what I saw.
Point of order, sir.
Yes, sir.
You have a motion and you have a second.
Okay.
For this three thousand dollars.
Second.
I recommend a vote.
Okay, all those in favor?
No.
No?
Yes.
Yes. If it matters, I'd vote no. You don't, you don't get to. It's two to one.
That's right, that's right, only what he wants to. Well, then how do we get out of the damn contract?
What contract?
They don't have a.
We don't have a contract.
We only pay for.
She just said we're, we're under a contract with them, we can't do it, we're gonna get our asses whooped.
No, there's no contract. There are our retainer agreements for our, we pay this retainer to represent us at the PRC. We pay the retainer to represent us through the union for agreements. Those, we have, I saw three retainer agreements, there is no contract. They don't have sole and exclusive rights to represent us.
Okay, then let's stop using them because we can't freaking afford it.
I agree. I agree, let's do that.
Okay. So, the motion passed.
Yep.
The motion passed. Okay, any other questions?
Need the email address of all the individuals that are willing to step up to the, uh, finance committee thing.
Uh, Jesse Duckett wants.
I already got his email, and I got yours.
You could just, okay.
Any other questions? Okay, any directors' remarks?
Thank you, guys.
Okay.
When we expect your resign?
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make the motion re-adjourn.
I have a second.
Can you answer the question?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Eyes happy.
I just wanna let you know, so we are.
I just wanna let you know that we are gonna.
No. I'm gonna just close up.